Okay, um, do you want to read the?
We got call meetings. You got to call me to it. How many, how many full timers do we have? Myself? Sean, are you full time? Yep.
Yes, I am.
I think we're good. So we have Vicky, Sean, you, I, and Craig.
Craig and I are both associates.
So you need one, you need to appoint one of them for, as a, as a voting member for tonight.
Uh, let's see. Okay. Dave, are you an associate?
Yes, I'm an associate. I, I let Sean take the open position last time.
Okay, great. So I'll appoint Dave as the voting member for the purposes of this hearing. So is there a motion to open the hearing?
I'll make a motion that we, oh, so yeah, second.
Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
I think we have to do a roll call vote, right? Yeah. So I'll vote yes. John?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
And Vicky?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. The clerk will read the notice.
Okay, legal notice. And of course, with MGL Chapter 48 and zoning, Towns and zoning bylaws, the Townsend Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a remote access virtual public hearing on Wednesday, September 29th, 2021 at 5:45 when the application of Hanford Brothers Company LLC under zoning bylaws 14557, 14564, and 14566. Advocate is requesting a variance from the commercial industrial district signed bylaws and or appeal of the building commissioners determination to allow for a total of three signs affixed to the Hanford building where one sign is permitted. Property is located at 18 Main Street, assesses map 41, block four, lot zero, in the outline commercial district. The link, I'm not going to read the link. Party wishing to speak in support of or in opposition to this application may do so in writing prior to the hearing or at the virtual hearing or represented by an agent or attorney. Copies of this application are available for review with the town at the office of the town clerk and zoning board of appeals during business hours. By email or request for digital copies at best facts and at Townsendmass.gov. William Cattigan, Chairman.
Great. Has everybody had a chance to look at the paperwork on this?
Yes, I have, yeah.
Yeah.
All right. Well, why don't we hear from the applicant or representative?
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chairman and the members of the board. My name's John Smolak, attorney at the firm Smolak and Vaughn in North Andover. For the petitioner, Hanifert Brothers. With me this afternoon is Jay Lord, who is project manager and consultant to Hanifert Brothers. And so as, as the board's aware, Hanifert is, Brothers is requesting the board to grant a zoning dimensional variance related to wall signs being upgraded in connection with proposed renovation program for Hanifert Brothers supermarket. As you know, which is located 18 Main Street as part of the Harbor Village Mall. So as, as mentioned, the request is to allow Hanifert to install three wall signs where one sign is permitted under section 14557B of the zoning bylaw. The supermarket, as you know, is located on, on a portion of a 11 plus acre parcel of land. And Hanifert has leased the supermarket building on the property from the owner since at least 2005. And the property is located entirely within the outline commercial zoning district. With your permission, what we'd like to do is share the slides that we provided to the board as part of the application. And if Jay can assist in sharing his screen.
Okay, who would like to, to have the screen chair implemented? Which, which participant?
I will.
Uh, you're, you are the owner, correct? Okay, give me a moment and I'll make sure that, I'll make you the co-host. And now you can screen share. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, with me here for a second. John, do you want to go walk through this? Yes, if I, I, if I could, sure. It's not posting yet. Can everybody see what's on the screen now?
No, no.
You know?
There it goes. Yep.
There we go.
Perfect. Thank you. So as you see, the first slide is simply an aerial view of the property, the supermarket shown in red, the bottom right of, of the slide. Just to point out a few features, the distance of the building to Main Street is about 500 feet. And as you know, from driving in this area, the elevation of the land is variable, but higher along Main Street at the location of the building. And it's a bit obscured by other buildings that have also been developed over the years. And so as background and, and prior to 2005, the town records indicated the premises was originally a Victory supermarket. And back in 1987, the board granted a wall sign dimensional variance to allow for the main wall sign of 203 square feet to be installed at the site. And so in 2005, when Hanifert was the first leased building at the time, the board issued a finding to Hanifert related to the signage, which provided basically that a reduction in the wall sign from 203 to a little over 201 square feet didn't require new variance as the wall sign was reduced from the earlier installed Victory sign. And that the change in the sign lighting from fluorescent to LED bulbs, along with the reduced sign size, didn't need a, a new permit. So no variance was required for the, for that action. If we could pull up the second slide, which is a close up of the aerial, that's, okay. Uh, this, this slide is a comparison of the existing layout at the top of the slide, as well as those new signage underneath as part of the bottom slide. So, um, so first of all, Hanifert desires to obtain the approval to replace the existing main wall sign, the Hanifert sign, as you see there today, with a sign that's exactly the same size, which is a little over 187 square feet. Same size as exists today with interior illumination. Hanifert also desires to obtain approval to replace the existing welcome sign, which if you look very closely is really to the far right of that top slide. And to be honest with you, couldn't find any records for that welcome sign. But presumably it was allowed at the time as a directional or other similar sign, but the building inspector has since recommended that the replacement of this sign should become part of this petition as part of the variance. So also in addition to the new wall sign and the welcome sign, the third proposed sign relates to the what's called the Hanifert to go sign, which is the sign on the bottom slide to the far left. And the, the Hanifert to go program is a, or the way that this program works is that it allows customers to order groceries online and have the Hanifert associates pack the groceries and then at a designated time, the customer drives to the Hanifert parking lot to find the designated pickup area where the groceries are delivered to the vehicle. And this is a relatively new feature that Hanifert has introduced to serve customers in a more safe way as a result of the COVID pandemic situation. So, so that is the third of the three signs. And if, if we can go to the next slide, which is more a blow up of all three signs. So again, the, the, these are the three signs that are looking to be replaced. The first, again, the far left one is sign A, which is the existing sign, we're replacing it with a new 187.78 square foot illuminated wall sign as part of the proposal. And it'll be in the exact same location as the existing sign today. Um, the second sign, which is to the, to the right, is this welcome sign consisting of 6.96 square feet. And the bottom sign, the Hanifert to go sign, which again is, is going to be proposed to be located to the left side of the main side, is, is also a non-illuminated wall sign, which is 18.25 square feet. And just also note that this, that sign looks a lot larger than the main sign, but it's really not. It's just a, just as a scaling, we wanted to sort of enhance the, the image of the Hanifert to go sign. And again, the Hanifert to go sign is 18.25 square feet, where the main sign is roughly 187 square feet. And so in addition, the other attached plans, which I won't go through currently, provide additional details, but the only sign with internal illumination is the main Hanifert sign. And we're significantly reducing the lumens on that sign from just under 50,000 lumens down to a little over 10,000 lumens or a reduction of almost 80% in the lighting from what you see there today. So, um, so again, we're proposing to keep the same, the main sign the same size as existing today and smaller than the originally approved sign back in 1987, but we're also significantly reducing the lighting for that main sign by almost 80%. I've also included a memo in support of the petition that goes through the entire variance criteria. I'm happy to summarize that if you'd like me to do so, but otherwise I could take questions.
So I have, I have a question for you pertaining to this, this slide versus the memorandum that you provided. The memorandum that says that the, the Hanifert, the smaller one, Hanifert to go, the small one and the welcome sign and non-illuminated, but on the, on the map here, it says an LED illuminated channel letters. What's, what is that? What's the disparity between that?
Jay, could you, are you talking about the Hanifert?
Yeah, the Hanifert is, is a, is a channel letter sign, David. I think that's what the, that one is.
On the, the welcome sign, it says routed acrylic letters, flex face and LED illuminated channel letters as well.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Yeah.
Yep.
That is, you know, a very good catch. That is absolutely not true. It is. None of it is, never has been, right?
So which, I guess which is correct, Jay, then?
You should just treat your proofreaders better, that's all.
These guys are new to us, so.
Is the memorandum correct that it's the non-illuminated? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So I guess if, if this thing does go forward, I would, I would ask you, John, to submit a new attachment here with that portion stricken with an initial on it or something?
We're happy to do so as, even as a condition, if the board desires to proceed with this. Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Well, I mean, that's clearly inconsistent, David, because routed acrylic letters have nothing to do with channel letters, so.
Yeah, you're the electric going. I was, I was mechanical in the world. I don't know what the hell that even means.
It's a mechanical distinction, but whatever.
The other question I have on this sign is the welcome sign says it's 12 inches high. What is the comparison to the existing sign that's there now with, um, you know, with this welcome is going to go where an existing sign is. What's the, what's the comparison between the existing sign?
They should basically be about the same. I mean, Hanifert has been using the welcome signs. I've been with them 20 years. They've been using them ever since I've been there. And they're just about that size. I'm working on a number of other projects and I, I think they're all about that 12 inches, you know, depends on the facade, but basically they're in that 12 inch range. So it's really a tit for tat.
That's, so doesn't this go back to what we said back in '06, Bill and David? Why, why, why is this even part of the, the variance request if it's, it's, it's replacing as is sign for the same dimensional size? I'm trying to pick up, try to pick apart the application to minimize what we have to deal with.
Oh, it does seem to be redundant to, um, you know, include anything but the Hanifert to go sign as, as an additional sign that needs a variance.
That's, and that's what, and that's all, that's all I would like to address. And maybe because you did include in the application variance request and or appeal of the zoning enforcement officer's decision, correct?
Yes, uh, yes. And, um, yeah, the, the only, uh, the only reason we're before the board is simply because of the fact that we have three signs instead of one. And so that's the variance relief requested, but we provided the other.
Yeah, but the welcome is replacing one that's already grandfathered, it's already been there.
Well, we're not sure when it was added, to be honest with you. We couldn't find records as to when that was added. So, so under an abundance of caution, even if we had two signs, we'd still have to come back for a variance.
I hear you. Believe me, I. The six and 10 year statute. Okay, I guess we'll just wait, see how others feel about that. I think we're just going on the Hanifert to go sign myself, but.
I feel pretty much the same way, Dave. The other two are just like a, almost a maintenance upgrade on the existing signs they have. So I think what the building inspector or commissioner was looking at was a third sign versus just upkeep and repair of the two existing signs.
I agree.
Well, the, the only other issue might be the, the, I think that signs are not grandfathered, or I don't know what the politically correct term for grandfather is again. I'm pretty sure that isn't politically correct, but, so if somebody were to change the sign bylaw, which I've been trying to get the plumbing, the planning board to do that for, since the eighties, nobody's, nobody's brave enough to go there, but if the sign bylaw were changed, then signs have to conform to the new bylaw. There's no, you can't keep your old sign just because it's been there forever. So I, that might be a potential issue for the applicant. Whereas if we, if we cover all the signs with the, with the variance, I don't think it makes a big difference to me, but.
It appeared, Mr. Chairman, it appears to me that basically the, the, the reason we're back before you is simply because of the number of signs. One as opposed to three or two, whatever you, you'd like to call them, but, but I think all those points are very valid and that, that's the reason we're seeking that variance request under that provision.
Okay. So where I'd like to go with, with, with this is to get past the 600 pound grill in a room is how do you justify this for various? I, I, I read your memorandum and while it's creative, it's creative in the argument. You know, I might even put it, might put it in my, in my little bundle of things to use in the future for my own stuff.
Well, well, happy to address that. I think I'll preface my comments with the fact that the requested relief and how we've styled this is consistent with the board's determination. And admittedly, while every variance petition is different, I will, I'd say that basically the basis for the relief is, is consistent with what was articulated back in 1987, when the original sign variance is granted. And also is consistent with, actually, the 2015 sign variance that was granted for Planet Fitness. And that is basically the unique conditions being the, that the building is located a significant distance from Main Street, approximately 500 feet. And in addition, the irregular topography of the land along Main Street, combined with the distance from Main Street, as well as the other buildings in the neighborhood closer to Main Street, really restrict the visibility of the building and the signs. And a little enforcement, the provisions as the signage would involve substantial hardship due to the lack of visibility, especially as it relates to the new Hanifert to go program, which is really designed to provide a little greater safety to customers and so on.
That's pretty good. So you're reading an, a, a already issued decision that we did against us, is that basically, that's pretty good.
Not, not against you, but, but basically reading it to be consistent with the board.
So do you actually, I'm just curious, do you have that decision in front of you? Do you, do you have the name of the people who, who, who participated in that hearing?
In 1987?
No, the 2015.
Uh, yeah, just one second. It would be. You give me one second.
I was just, I'm just curious.
I think I participated in that one, David.
Yeah.
It was, uh, Anthony Genova, Darlene Sedamo, Phil Cattigan, Kelly Chambers, and Craig Stevens.
Yeah, I didn't think I was on that one.
And.
You know, I think, David, uh, it's, uh, it's hard to, it's hard to justify a variance under any circumstances, but, um, in the case of this signed by law, which is an antique and, um, you know, just doesn't, doesn't do it for, um, things like a shopping mall like we're considering here. It just doesn't make sense to, to literally enforce the bylaw in, in this case. I mean, that's, that's where I would come from. And it's just, it's, you know, it's a, it's definitely a hardship to enforce the bylaw in this particular case.
Right, but that's still, you know, that, you know, my position on variances when I, yeah, so you're right, they're, they're very hard to come by. And in fact, in the 20 some odd years that I've been on the zone, I think two or three legitimate variances have been granted. At least the ones that I've been, I was off for a period of time when I was a select one. And now I'm back on because one of the participants in this one passed away. But, um, well, I'm just, I'm just one of five voting members, so that's fine. All right.
I was going to chime in. I, I, the, the tendency that I see from long ago was the fear of turning that area of 119 into, uh, like the Las Vegas Strip, you know, with huge amounts of lighting, signage, et cetera. And I don't, as he pointed out, 500 feet from the road, two out of three of the signs aren't even going to be illuminated. I don't see where it's a major issue under the way this, uh, this is being proposed as, as being a major problem for us. Although because it is a application for variance, that's kind of a, a hurdle that has to be considered.
Yeah, I think John's argument, if you, if you just look at it in a vacuum, even without the Planet Fitness, it's, it's a viable argument. It's whether or not it applies to the three, you know, the three plus one corner of a, of a, of a variance on the 48 is, is, that's where we have to come into effect, but I'm not going to, I'm not going to argue against it. You know how I'm, how, what my position is. I don't want to sway other people, so I'll leave it at that. If, if the Planet Fitness worked for you guys and, um, and Dave, if you don't think it's a problem because it's 500 plus feet from the road, probably a good idea.
Yeah, to me, that, that video sign at the high school is way more intrusive.
Yeah, I wasn't on the board when that one was issued either.
Don't, don't look at me for that one also.
I know, I go away for a couple, three years and look what happens. Um, all right. I'm all set.
Anybody else on the board have a point of view here?
Well, for, for me, I, I mean, I, I agree that it really, it blends in with the way things are. It's just a replacement. The hard part for me in the variance piece is, you know, substantial hardship if the signs aren't there. I mean, people are still going to find Hanifert's. It's the only one around, so it's, that one's a little thin for me, but I agree that the signs in themselves, is there anything, I'm trying to remember in the variance, so is, if we grant the variance, could they make signs, you know, in the future, double the size what they are? Are they, are they going to be restricted to keeping it at the size that they are now?
Oh, they would, they would have to come back and do this all over again for any change.
Okay, okay.
All right.
Were there any butters online?
Yeah, the guy Marty's second PC, I don't know, he's on the, I don't know who he is, but he's, um, he's, he's watching. I don't, and Veronica is on here as well. I don't know if anybody has any comments.
I don't understand something.
Go ahead, Sean.
Um, why is like a variance so like taboo? I, I don't, is it because it sets precedent? I, I don't understand that.
So just the way, the way it works is, um, there's, there's two land use state statutes, there's 40A and 40B. 40B is a, is, you know, we know that, but 48, our bylaws are codified or basically assumed from, from the 48 structure and, and includes the variance. I forget the state statute number. John may be able to pitch that out, but we, we're just mirroring, our bylaws just kind of mirror the state statute. We can't, we can't do less than what the state requires. We can do more, but we can't reduce the restrictions. And then the ours bylaws reflect the 48 requests. It's like section 16, isn't it, John, something like that?
Uh, actually, section 10.
Section 10. I knew you knew that. So it's, we're just mirroring the state statute, that's all. It's, it's people greater than us and high in pay grade that have determined that variances are taboo. We just have to enforce it.
Oh, the other, the other feature, Sean, is that a variance goes with the land as opposed to a special permit only goes to the applicant, the owner.
Yeah.
So if, if the place changes hands, then the special permit is not, is null and void, basically. Whereas a variance is, is a, attached to that parcel.
You're on mute, Sean.
So why wouldn't they apply for a special permit rather than a variance?
Well, because, because the signed bylaw doesn't, doesn't have, it was written before special permits were invented. So, so it, it doesn't have any special permit capabilities.
Yeah. Typically a bylaw, if you can use it by, if you can use it by special permit, the bylaw will say you cannot do this but by special permit. If there's no allowed use or dimensional changes or whatever in that bylaw, nothing at all regardless of special permit, then it's a variance because you're going totally against what, what's written in this, in the town bylaws.
Okay, so I understand now.
Yeah.
So the variance is because it's going above and beyond the town bylaw.
With no exceptions that are within the, within the bylaw itself. Yeah.
Okay, that makes sense. So it's.
Okay.
I, I got it now.
Okay. I mean, we don't get many of these. I mean, it's because it's, I think maybe because one of my partners does land use stuff and he, and he says Townsend is very strict on, on, on zoning with variances specifically. He blames me for it, but.
I agree, David. It's all your fault.
So that's the story, Sean, really.
So, um, I guess we could go through, I don't know, is, is, is anybody prepared to make a motion or do we need to go through the four, four part and clause or?
I think you need to go through the four part clause, Bill, just to put it part of the record.
Yeah.
All right. Well, I haven't got that stuff in front of me.
All right, I'll tell you, I'll tell you what, how about if I do, how about if I do a motion incorporating the, the four part test?
Great.
All right, well, everybody agree with that, with that premise? Okay. Let me just get my, my head together here. So I'll make a motion that we approve the Hanifert Brothers Company LLC's request for variance pursuant to the company plans and documents with amended changes as requested for the variance and finding that the circumstances relating to soil condition, shape, or topography of such land or structure, and especially affecting such land or structure, but not affecting generally the zoning, this is just a, this is just a parroting depth of the, of the, the paragraph of the zone. Is located a little enforcement of provision of the bylaw would involve substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, to the petitioning applicant. And that the desired relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent of the proposed bylaw.
So moved. Second.
All right. Sounds good. Pulling the members. Vicky?
Yes.
Dave Chanel?
Uh, no.
Dave, the other Dave?
Yes.
Uh, Sean? Sean?
No.
Yeah, I'm gonna vote yes, but the motion fails to carry.
Good, Mr. Chairman, could we consider a, a request for reconsideration at the next meeting? Because, because certainly under the variance criteria, I mean, there is definitely unique conditions to this land and, and again, this is entirely consistent with the board's decision back in 1987 when they found a hardship and found the unique conditions related to the property. The, the land definitely slopes higher in the areas from the top by Main Street as opposed to the back of the property. The building's obscure, so the signage as well as you drive along Main Street. And so the, the unique circumstances are definitely related to soil shaped topography and, and also buildings, which is an allowable criterion under the, under the zoning bylaw and the case law. And in terms of the enforcement, if we don't have the signage, what you're gonna be left with is signage that's gonna continue to deteriorate. And, and again, one of the main important pieces of this signage is the the Hannaford to go program, which is a new feature, which is designed to deal with unique circumstances like this, which is to provide, you know, seniors and others with the ability to, to acquire and to, and to, and to be able to pick up their groceries in circumstances such as this COVID situation. And, 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 and so the other issue is, you know, does this relief really result in a substantial detriment to the public good? And, and the answer is no, I mean, the existing building has existed for many years and the renovation of the supermarket involves doing refreshed signage, which, which improves the situation, the proposed signage. Again, the particularly, particularly the Hannaford to go signage is really something designed to protect health and safety of seniors and others by providing that additional signage and visibility. And, and so the overall, you know, particularly with the repainting of the building and, and it's upgraded, it really results in a significant improvement. And again, the, these, the variance criteria that I identified are exactly like the criteria that were reviewed by the board and approved back in 1987 and, and back in 2015 with Planet Fitness. And so I, I'm not clear why it would be inconsistent for the board to follow its prior precedent and to reconsider that vote and to allow for a variance in this particular circumstance. Otherwise, we're left with a situation where we're not going to be able to, to upgrade these signs.
Chairman, again, I'm sorry, I did not hear Dave, Board Member Dave Fanioli's vote, can you please repeat it?
Yes, I voted yes.
Thank you.
So as a, as a, as a compromise, Bill, we still have the appeal of the zoning enforcement officer's decision, which is what my initial comments were, we could go back and aside from a reconsideration, we can go back and say sign, I still don't think sign B requires a variance because it's an existing sign, you're just changing the sign, so we can, we could do away with that. That would give you one, one of the signs, the other one, I thought the bigger one is, is smaller in size, I don't think that requires a variance either, it's really the numbers, like you said, John, so why don't we, why don't we, why don't we act on the, the appeal now that will give you two out of the three signs that you are, that you want? Because they're existing already. And they're the same exact size, it's just replacing one for one, I don't have a problem with those.
Me neither.
All right, so I'll make a motion that we, that we, what's the word? I'm having a brain, I'm having a brain crap.
Table?
What's that?
Table the, the previous vote?
No, no, on the, on the, on the building inspector, we're, we're going to overturn the building inspector regarding signs A and B as, as as reflected in the applicant's memorandum for a reason that it is replacing signs that are, that have an as is condition.
Yeah. I don't remember the building.
It'd be overturned.
It's overturned, yeah, well, while we don't, while we're just, yeah, we're overturning, we're overturning Eric's decision on sign, sign A and B.
We, Mr. Chair, we, we'd certainly appreciate that consideration.
Yeah. I got it. So I can't remember what Eric's argument was against revving the signs, the A and B.
Well, the A argument, the argument against sign A was pretty much the same as we had back in six or seven. But it's a, it's a, it's an even swap as far as even, even the luminance are less, so I think that's, I don't see that as a change at all, I think that's an improvement.
That's an upgrade, yeah.
Yeah, the other sign, the welcome sign that's to the right of, you know, the right of the main sign, that's, that's replacing an existing sign that's already there. I don't, I don't, that's why I was asking the size and dimension of it, of the existing sign, I don't find that to be a, a new sign, I just, that's just an upgrade of an existing sign. I don't have a problem with that either.
All right, well, you could go, go for a motion to overturn the building inspector.
I just, I just made it, we just, we just need a second.
I second it.
Okay. Polling the members, Vicki?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Dave Chanel?
Yes.
And the other Dave?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes to, that motion carries.
So, so then, then you're left with a motion for reconsideration either tonight or at an, at a follow-up meeting for the welcome, for the Hannaford to go sign.
I mean, I don't see how we're gonna, gonna make progress on that, but we could we could schedule a meeting for another couple of weeks and, and what do we do? Think about it.
Can we find, can Beth find the Planet Fitness decision and pass that around? Because I'm trying to understand what the, if, if there's a difference between what was decided about Planet Fitness versus Hannaford.
That would be good.
Yep, that would be good.
All right, so is there?
Yeah, I'll, I'll motion, I'll make a motion that we suspend the, the vote on the variance to, Beth, do we have a, do we have another meeting coming up or scheduled, are we still?
Um, would, no, but there is another application before you, so I would say we're talking probably November 17th.
Okay.
Just to give it time, is that too far along, I mean, you can meet before then, you can meet in October if you want.
How does that meet within the timeline of the variance?
Oh, the, well, the public here, if you don't close the public hearing, but you've already voted.
Well, we suspended, we're gonna, I'm gonna, my motion to suspend that.
Okay, so after the close of the public hearing, you have 65 days. So you haven't closed the public hearing yet, so you have.
So we haven't closed, all right.
Mr. Chairman, before motions made, could I make a suggestion that perhaps what we'll do is we'll withdraw that request for reconsideration in light of the finding vote that the board has taken?
Sure. Sean, you're taking, you're withdrawing your, your variance application?
No, no, the reconsideration request in light of the fact that the board has made a finding that allows us to preserve two signs out of the three.
Well, that's gonna, that's gonna play out no matter what, it's, the suspend is only on the variance denial for the, for that welcome sign, I mean, the to-go sign.
The Hannaford to go sign.
Yeah, because if you let the decision lapse, you know, it's a two-year restriction on applying again.
Right, I think that what we can do is if we perhaps preserve the finding and that vote has been established and if the board is willing to let us withdraw without prejudice, the variance request, then, then we won't have that prohibition if the boards.
I, I would agree with that. Are you doing that tonight? You doing that tonight, John?
I think we would do that tonight in light of the finding vote.
Yeah, this is the only problem with zooming this because usually we request a written, written withdrawal.
You can send Beth an email under his, under his name as cover, requesting withdrawal.
Definitely. I'm here in the office, so that's fine.
All right, so, so right now, the way it stands, we took a vote for the building inspectors overturning it, you're good for two out of the three signs, it's just the to-go sign, that's, that's, and you're gonna withdraw your application without prejudice?
That's correct, and I could send an email out tonight after the meeting.
Okay, do we, Bill, do we do that by, by motion to accept it? I think we do, right?
Yep.
All right. That's what you watch on instead of a reconsideration, sure.
I think so at this point.
I'll make a motion that we, that we accept the Hannaford's indication to withdraw without prejudice, it's variance request.
Second.
Hey, polling the members, Vicki?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Dave Chanel?
Yes.
The other Dave?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes, okay, motion carries. Okay.
Oh, well, I'm, I'm sorry, point of order, I will be writing a decision for the appeal, correct? For the overturn.
The building inspector's determination, yes.
Okay, great, and could you make a motion to have Bill Cattigan sign that on behalf of the board members if, if you so wish?
Yeah, sounds like a plan, motion, motion to authorize Bill Cattigan as chairman to sign on behalf of the board?
Second.
The decision, okay, and you'll all review it before that, okay.
Okay, polling the members on that one, Vicki?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Dave Chanel?
Yes.
The other Dave?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes, I, I don't know if I can vote on that or not, but whatever, that's enough, it carries. Okay, so let me know, Beth, when you need my signature.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, thank you.
Take care.
Thanks.
Take care.
Okay, what else is up?
We have another hearing at 6:15, we're about 10 minutes late for. We all ready for that? I'll make a motion that we open the hearing on Paul and Lori Martin for a special permit.
Second.
Do we have to poll the members on that, I guess so. Okay, polling the members, Vicki?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Dave Chanel?
Yes.
Dave Fanioli?
Yes.
I'll vote yes, okay. All right, so what, what, what's this one about? I think I had a conversation with the building inspector about this one.
Want to read the notice first though, Bill?
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Okay. In accordance with Mass General Laws, Chapter 48, the Townsend zoning bylaws, Townsend Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a remote access virtual public hearing on Wednesday, September 29th, 2021, at 6:15 PM or thereafter on an application of Paul and Lori Martin for a special permit and or appeal of the building and Commissioner's determination on zoning bylaws 14518, 14564, and 14565. The applicants are proposing to construct a deck within 1.1 feet of the side yard lot line in the easterly side of the pre-existing non-conforming residential structure at 203 Main Street, such as map 26 block 23 lot zero. Public remote only access to the meeting is via the following website listed. Priests wishing to speak in support of or in opposition to this application may do so in writing prior to the hearing or at a virtual hearing in person represented by an agent of attorney. Copies of this application available for review of the town, of the office, the town clerk, and zoning board of appeals during business hours, William Cattigan, Chairman.
So, yeah, I believe the, this is a section six finding, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah. As we have considered these in the past, it, it used to be requirement that the there couldn't be an increase in the non-conformity without a variance. But I believe the case law has changed for single-family homes, not for commercial, as Dave has pointed out, but so that variance is no longer required. So the, the, the board can conceivably approve something that you know, violates the current zoning bylaw in the case of a pre-existing non-conforming lot. So I don't know where that puts us in this particular case, other than 1.1 foot side yard setback is, is not something we've ever gone for in the past, but.
No, but Bill, the existing, the existing structure, I mean, the reason why I think they kept it at 1.1 feet is because their existing structure is 1.1 feet from the side yard. So they actually, you know, Eric didn't have a certified plan, so they went out and actually got one. And that's actually, that's in their application and the the, the sizing of the deck is, runs, you know, the, runs parallel to the, to the lot side yard along with where the house, corner of the houses. So doesn't seem, I mean, from my perspective, it doesn't seem to be a, a problem provided, you know, we get the right plans and all, all the things that go along with it.
Do you want me to screenshot the plan?
What's that?
Do you want me to screenshot the site plan?
Oh, you, can you? You have that technology, nice.
Good, yeah, sounds good.
It would be easier than if I was on right now.
Do you have to get appointed host, Beth, or?
Uh, yeah.
Host, okay.
I just made, I just made Beth the co-host.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Do we know who's got the news going on in the background?
Might be me.
This is, it's getting picked up.
Okay, hang on.
Is that the castle pitcher he's got there?
I, I'm trying to figure out how to swap that, I don't know if I'll be able to. Hmm.
Sideways.
I'm sorry, I don't know if I can. Well, Dave, I should have let you do this.
You know, I can do it.
Beth, download the, download it and then you can, you can look at that.
Download, okay.
Be able to rotate it.
I got you. Good, good, good idea.
Yeah.
All right. It's part of a PDF.
Yeah, but just take control shift plus and then rotate it with that little rotate sign right to your right of the plus sign.
No, that, that one there.
Oh, perfect.
Craig, what was the, what was the quick key on that one?
Like question, oh, control shift plus.
Yeah, I did.
I'm kidding.
We have some nerds on this board, I'll tell you, it's wonderful.
Thanks, Greg, I learned something today, that's great. Can you, can you zoom in on that, Beth, do you have the ability?
Now we gotta zoom.
Nice.
All right, how, how much?
So, Billy, you see what I was saying on the corner of the, of the the existing dwelling, it's 1.1?
Yeah.
And then the edge, on the edge of the outside lying of the deck, it's also 1.1.
Yeah.
And there's no existing deck there today, there's not, no structure on the house?
Oh, and, and right above it, the butter is a, is a paved driveway, okay.
And then you have a fence there as well, right, is that correct?
Yes.
Say it again, what, what was the question? Say it again. What, what was the question?
No, the, the, there's a fence, like, there's, I see a chain link fence that's there as well, right?
Yes. Yeah. I think, do we have the owners on, on board here? They?
Yes, we're here. Can you hear us?
Yeah.
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 Okay.
And we have Mr. Black as well, I thought, right?
Yeah, I'm here, yeah.
Okay, great.
Are there any pictures available of the lot or the? It'd be easier to see a little bit. I guess not.
Yeah, I, I drive by it every day. It's um, I think it's two houses past the uh, the, the gas station out right across the street from.
I'm right across where Sterlite, the track the trails go in and out of.
Yeah, how do you like those lights?
The beige house?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so you've done a lot of work to the house itself as well then, right?
Yes.
Okay.
And what's the height of this deck off the ground?
It is no more than um. Two to, uh, two and a half to three feet high. That's it off the ground.
Okay.
All right. No existing deck there today? No, no existing?
No, there isn't.
Okay.
There was a concern, I think, from the Board of Health, or was it Conservation Commission, about how far it was from the septic system? And I don't see the septic labeled on here. Do I?
If, if you look on the design where the gazebo is.
Yeah.
It's on the other side of that. So you're talking about uh fifteen, twenty feet away from the house.
Okay, I think they were looking for five feet.
Yeah. Bill, do you have the mandatory referrals on this one?
I haven't seen anything.
Yes. Clerk, um, there was one comment from the Board of Health. Did you, um, I'm sorry, did you read the legal notice to open the public hearing?
I did.
I missed that. I'm sorry. So there is in a comment from the Board of Health comment in the uh SharePoint folder under two oh three Main Street.
Okay, let me see if I can find that.
Everyone else returned no comment.
So the Board of Health was only worried about the location of the leach bed with regard to this, to the deck?
Correct.
Okay.
If you look at that, the leach bed is actually closer to the edge of my fence. It's in a, it's in a square. It's probably maybe twenty-five, thirty feet from the house. It's roughly right where the forty-six point three feet is. That number, that's roughly where it is.
Okay.
Go up a couple.
Yeah, I can't find the mandatory referral to have it read out. So what did it say?
Uh, I, I can read it for you. Um, it says, is there a plan that shows the deck, question mark? Proximity from deck to septic should be at least five feet. Uh, that was from Rick Medcalf. Just.
Okay.
Yeah, I, yeah, that was his only concern.
I think we're covered because if it's, if you say it's twenty-four and your deck is twelve foot in that direction.
Yes.
You've got twelve foot left before you hit the leach bed.
Right. And if you look where the G is, that starts with the gazebo. Though, that's roughly where the cap's off my septic.
Okay.
And the leach field is further out from there.
All right. Any other technical questions from the board here? Should we go, should we go take a look at this?
Um, I said, I, I, I am, I saw, I went down a couple of weeks ago and looked at it, but just drove, quick drive by and turn around and come back out. But you can see there's just driving down Main Street. You can, you can look at the, up the road and it's, it's narrow. It's very narrow. But I mean, that's what the drawing shows anyways, but that's.
Well, we've got two, two butters. One of them is, at least is on the, on the meeting here. So um, do you, you wanna uh have any comments, Mr. Black?
Uh, my only comment is I have no issue with him putting the deck there. It doesn't affect my property or anything to do with me. So I have no issue with it.
Okay. And then what about the uh, the lady on the other side? Any, any correspondence or anything from her?
Who are you referring to? Can you just?
If you look at the top of that print, it's um Amanda D. Caprino. I don't know how to pronounce that.
That was good.
That was good? Thank you.
It was a name like Funny Ole. I can call that.
Yeah. All right, so we got nothing. All right, so it um. I don't have an issue with it either. I mean, the deck's in the back and um, it's not, not really increasing the non-conformity.
Oh.
I'm sorry, I'm not seeing the name of the other participant. Could you please repeat that?
If you scroll your um print down a little bit.
Yeah. Oh, well, I'm actually looking at the participants list. Oh, right now?
No, no, it's just, it's on the print who the, who the butter is.
Okay, I'm sorry. I was looking at the, the list of uh those present in the meeting.
No, no, I, I, I was trying to get, I didn't see her here, but.
Is that, is the list different from the name on the plan, Beth? Or is there nothing from that about her?
There is. The um Z B A office did not receive any correspondence from a butters regarding the project.
Well, then by default, that's uh. That's a no comment from them.
Yeah, okay. All right, is there a, a motion?
Will we have to a finding?
Yeah. Make a motion to. For findings.
So don't you, so Bill, don't usually go through the one forty, one forty-five, sixty-five um A through G findings. You know, you go through, go through the list.
On the section six finding, yeah. I don't have that on, in front of me.
So the fir, so the first one, I can re, I can read and let, and I'll read it and then you can comment. Adequacy of this, adequacy of the site in terms of size for the proposed use.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a good question, but I, I don't see that there's any real change in impact um from this proposal to what's already there.
Okay, I agree. Um, B, suitability of the site for the proposed use.
Well, it's residential use, residential site.
Okay. Um, C, impact on traffic flow and safety.
Negligible.
Negligible, I agree. D, impact on neighborhood visual character, including views and vistas.
Same negligible.
The only one that's really impacted is Mr. Black and he has no, the butter and he has, he's indicated he has no issues with it. And no one else is gonna see it, even from the road. No one's gonna see it. E, adequacy of method of sewage disposal, source of water, and drainage.
No impact.
No impact at all. F, adequacy of utilities and other pro, public use services.
No impact there either.
And G, impact on ground and service water quality and other environmental and natural resource considerations. I would say no impact.
No impact on that either, yeah. It's a pretty harmless project.
It is, yeah.
I mean, except just reading about it, you're going, oh my God, a foot from the property.
Right, I know. It's, it's wild.
Yeah, but once you look at it and see, it's like, yeah, that, he couldn't increase the uh, the uh. Problem, the grandfathered part of it, because there's a chain link fence there. He'd have to tear his neighbor's fence down to increase the uh, the, the non-compliance, so.
Uh, the chain link fence is actually mine.
Oh, there you go.
Even more reasoning.
Yeah, so, no, that's what I'm saying. He'd have to tear down. Okay, yeah, so now, no big deal.
All right, is there a motion?
So I'll, I'll make, I'll make a motion of findings that uh the proposed use will not have an adverse effect, which overbalances beneficial effects on either the neighborhood or the town.
Is there a second?
Second.
Polling the members. Um, Vicki.
Yes.
Um, Dave Chanel.
Yes.
Dave Funioli.
Yes.
And um.
John.
Yes.
Sean, yes.
Yes.
I can't, because Beth is sharing her screen, I can't see everybody.
Yeah.
There you go. That's good. So.
And you guys, you guys can just say your last name with your vote. That's helpful too, when we're meeting remotely. Thank you. And who, I'm sorry, who seconded that? Was that Sean?
Yes, Sean Pearson, second.
Thank you.
Okay. So, so that motion on the findings have been, has been made in second and approved. I'll make a motion that we approve the special permit to, to Paul and Lori Martin pursuant to the plans and documents presented with the application.
Second.
That's David Chanel, by the way.
Vicki, that's Vicki.
Thank you, Vicki.
Polling the members again. Vicki.
Uh, yes.
Sean.
Yes.
Dave Funioli.
Dave Funioli, yes.
Dave Chanel.
Dave Chanel, yes.
And I'll vote yes. Motion carries.
And I'll make a motion that we, that we authorize Chairman Cattigan to sign on behalf of the board.
So moved.
Funny Ole.
The way this works is now we have fourteen days to file the decision with the town clerk. And you'll get a copy of the decision in the mail showing the town clerk stamp. So that's the date it was filed. Uh, there's a twenty-day appeal period during which any of the irate people who showed up here can, can appeal your, your decision. But uh, at the end of the twenty-day appeal period, you can go to the town clerk, uh, because any appeal would have to be filed, copied to her. And she will give you a letter certifying that no fields have been filed. Uh, you also have to record the decision at the Middlesex South Registry of Deeds. And uh, they will give you a, well, they do real-time stuff now because they're so expensive. But anyway, uh, you, with those two items, the letter from the town clerk and the uh evidence of recording of the decision, you can go to the building inspector and get your building permit.
Yeah.
So you're talking about after thirty days, I can uh look at, beginning to get the materials and be able to build a deck?
Well, um, um, I don't know. When do you, when do you think you're gonna file the decision? So, I mean.
I should have to file that next week. So early next week.
All right, so twenty days from early next week, whatever that works out to be, is when.
So roughly the first, the second week of November then?
Yeah. I would think that would be fun.
So Paul, when you have a question about timeline, just give Beth the call when she's at the town. You, you working at, you're working on site now, Beth? Are you?
I'm at, at my town hall right now. Yeah.
Yeah.
And I am, uh, office hours nine to four, Monday through Thursday.
So just drop by and ask some questions. She'll be happy. Do we have a, do we have a piece of paper that shows the timeline or the, the flow chart, basically, what's going on?
Absolutely. Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, so you, just point of order. I don't think you ever took a wrong call.
We didn't, we didn't vote on the motion until have Bill sign. Yeah.
Thank you.
Oh, yes. Polling members. Vicki.
Please.
Uh, Sean.
Sean Pearson votes yes.
Uh, Dave Funioli.
Funioli, yes.
Dave Chanel.
Chanel, yes.
Cattigan, yes. Okay, sorry about that. What I would do, uh, if you're champion at the bit, is uh go talk to the building and building department or inspector or Janet and.
Right.
And just let them know that this is coming and um, because uh, these days they have to. They have to um send all these building uh permit applications around to the various boards to get signed, so.
Right.
So that, that could take longer than our process uh depending, so.
Okay.
You might wanna give them a heads up and, and uh find out if there's gonna be any sticky wickets.
Okay.
All right.
All right, I think we're done.
No, we have some minutes to approve.
We got a lot more than that. We have a lot more than. Well, I, so I read the minutes and I only did a couple of days ago, but I sent a bunch of changes.
They're all incorporated, yeah.
All been incorporated?
Yeah.
Are, are we all set the, the lock off?
You're, you're set, yes.
Paul, you're all set. Thank you.
Thank you. Bye, Laurie.
Yeah.
So I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes. I don't even know what dated it.
Second, Vicki.
It's the twenty-ninth, Dave.
No, I'm talking about the minutes that we are proving.
Back in June?
Yeah, my, let me re, let me amend my motion. Motion to approve the minutes of, of June thirtieth, twenty twenty.
Second, Jeniki.
Whoa, whoa, whoa.
Whoa, 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 wait, wait, yeah.
June of twenty twenty or twenty twenty?
Twenty twenty-one. Well, we had it on minutes.
Hey, you don't even know what year it is.
Um, it's been, it's, it's, I'm in a little cloud.
All right, twenty twenty or twenty twenty-one?
Twenty twenty-one. I thought he said twenty twenty-one.
You said twenty twenty.
Oh, I did.
I say we're not that bad. That sounds like the old Conservation Commission. We'll do it if we feel like it.
Oh, I stand corrected. I apologize. Uh, motion to approve the minutes of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one.
And Vicki seconded it, right? Okay. All right, polling the members. Vicki.
Uh, yes.
Sean.
Sean Pearson, yes.
Dave Funioli.
Funioli, yes.
And Dave Chanel.
Yes, Chanel, yes.
And Cattigan, yes. All right, motions are, the minutes are approved. Any other uh earth-shattering things we need to take care of here?
We got a lot of correspondence we gotta go through.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah.
So, um, if I could just help you on that, uh, there is a folder with the building commissioner determinations that have been issued since the June thirtieth meeting. Um, and board members should have access to those and review them at, on, on your own time. The, there is also, since the board hasn't met, we've received the bulletin uh regarding the May eighth, twenty twenty-one annual town meeting on Articles nineteen, uh eighteen, nineteen, and twenty-three. And they have been approved by the Attorney General and they are now codified in E code. Um, if you would like to see them there. Uh, that's the scenic roads um and the um age-restricted housing development bylaw. And the, the three point two is a memo received uh from the Board of Selectmen's Office. And it is in regards to renewal of applications for the twenty twenty-one uh licenses for alcoholic beverages, entertainment, common victroler, and class one, two, and three licenses. Um, this is something I, you know, working on administratively in the office, but um the memo is to the Zoning Board of Appeals, so um. And briefly, um, if there are any violations, expired certificates of inspections, or outstanding conditions of special permits. And our payment owed for taxes for the attached list of licensees, please inform the office as soon as possible. Um, I am going through the list in the office, but I wanted to ask the board members if anything comes to mind from, from the list, or if you've been able to review the list or.
The list is blank when I opened it.
Oh, it didn't come through?
No, that's the only one that you sent me that did not come through.
Oh, goodness. All right. Well, I'll send it again because it is, I would probably like to get this back to the Board of Selectmen in um, in a week. Uh, they issued it on September sixteenth, so I'm sure they're gonna be processing the rest of this. So I'll send it to you, Sean. Um, anybody else didn't see it or have any comments?
I'm sorry. I, I, I don't really have any recollection of any of these expiring or any issues with them.
Okay.
I, I'll try to re-download it and, and see if it goes. I'm, I was looking at it on my phone. I could try to move it to the laptop and see. But I can't see the screen.
And the third correspondence came um to uh Chaz, uh to Selectman, uh Sexton Duranian, from the USGS FEMA Risk Map Projects in New England. Uh, and these are the, there's access through this to the digital copies of the preliminary. Uh, these are the, there's access through this to the digital copies of the preliminary firms and firms are basically the flood insurance rate maps. Um, the ZBA hasn't really had to use them, but uh, there are times when they are called into play, right, Bill? Am I right?
Well, yeah, yeah.
And, and various projects, uh, 40Bs and stuff, maybe, I don't know. I don't know your experience with that.
No, I, I mean, we, we, uh, we actually haven't ever paid much attention to the FEMA maps because, um, um, I think we had somebody that, you know, changed one or some darn thing, but I can't remember what the, what the reason for that was, but. I mean, mostly we go by the RA and RB zones and the, uh, you know, the aqua vert protection overlay and stuff like that, so.
He does wanna look at that. There is a comment period on it, um, and there is a link to, to look at the maps online, um, the preliminary maps. And that's it for correspondence.
You're muted, Dave.
Thank you, sorry about that. Um, I'm looking at the correspondence that you sent along in that Dropbox. There's a lot of stuff that seems like from Mickey Lorden to a guy named Smart, to a couple others that'll, are, are those down the, coming down the road, applications for something? Why do, why do we get, why do we get those?
Are you looking under the folder that says Building Commissioner's Office Determination and Letters?
Yeah, I think so.
Those are all from the Building Commissioner's Office. Those are all letters that have been issued. Um, and there have, I will let you know as soon as we do get an application on them, um. But yes, those are, and, and yeah, we did, the ZBA office did receive an application on 8 Jeff Street, um, which I am processing now.
Eight, oh, is that the?
Notice of violation.
Jeff Smart, 491 Main Street?
Uh, no, it's 8 Jeff Street is the property location.
I was just reading the letter. I was just reading from the building commissioners, um, address that he assigned.
Yeah, so that is, I think, if the board wants to set a date, you know, I, I picked November 17th for that. But I mean, you know, if that date works for everybody, you know, we can do that or I can try to do it a little earlier, but.
I can do, I can do the 17th if, if that, that works for me.
Fine with me.
Alright, great.
Fun with me. And Beth, I can't open all of them on this laptop.
Okay, great.
I just, the screen, I just went over on my screen.
So the next meeting will be November 17th. Unless, um, you know, he's in the media.
Sounds, can we, can we do it at 5:30 like, like tonight?
Absolutely.
Is that really okay with that?
Would you like, would you like to stay remote or hybrid?
Remote is fine with me. Is it working for everybody else?
Yeah.
Yep, it works.
Less travel.
Oil machine.
Less travel. You travel a mile and a half down the road.
Oh, not, not me, but I mean, you know, we, we, uh, I don't know where you, the, the attorney for, um, yeah, well, he was North Andover, so that's.
He was in Andover. He was an ass man.
That's 45 minutes.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
On a good day.
Right.
I'm, I'm, I'm still in Westford right now.
Well.
You're missing the traffic, that's good.
Yeah. Alright, so good.
Alright.
So all, and all those other things are just a heads up, things that might be, might, might come, come to pass on.
Uh, well, they might, yeah, so that's why I distribute them to board members, so you can, you can come at your leisure and then as soon as I get an application, um, I will certainly, um, you know, let you know that it's been received, but those are things that have been flagged, if you will.
Interesting, okay.
Alright. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Dave Chanel second.
Funny Ole.
Funny Ole says, so moved.
Alright, I guess we have to poll the members again. Vicky?
Yes.
Sean?
Pearson, yes.
Dave Funny Ole?
Yes, Funny Ole, yes.
Chanel?
Chanel, yes.
And Catigan, yes. Alright, thank you guys. Sorry I was late.
That's okay, 7 o'clock sharp.
Hi, Veronica. How we doing?
You're muted, Ronnie.
Did you wanna talk about it? Ronnie, did you wanna talk?
No, 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 I'm just waving bye.